Tonight, our pledge of allegiance will be led by a youth group, and we will let Councilwoman Scherzer tell us who the group is.
So tonight, we have the honor to have Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated and their youth auxiliary, the Zeta Omikats, Perlets, and Archanets. So whoever's going to do the prayer and pledge, please come to the podium. We'll start with the prayer, and then we'll do the pledge.
For those who would like to participate, please do so.
Go ahead with the prayers.
Good evening. My name is Amari Sims, and I am the daughter of Tanya Sims and Curtis Robinson, and I am representing Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, Zeta Omega Zeta Chapter, Omikats, and we will be saying the Lord's Prayer.
Hi, my name is Trinvy Hughes, and I'm a Perlet. Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, in earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive them that trespass against us; and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory, for ever and ever. Amen.
My name is Jala Poole. I'm an Archanet.
My name is Darianne McCandless, and I'm an Archanet.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to thank the youth group, and we'd like to thank the advisors for doing what you did, you and your first step of becoming an official government worker. First step. That's where it starts. It starts when you're small, and you figure out what it is you want to do. So I thank you so much, young group, and the advisors. Roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Forbes?
Present.
Councilmember Bench?
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Present.
Councilmember Millen?
Present.
Councilmember Balls?
Present.
Councilmember Ostash?
Present.
Mayor Clark is excused. Mayor Protem Moore?
Present.
We have seven members present, one absent, one vacancy. And I do have some announcements tonight.
Thank you.
Yes, City Council will conduct a committee of the whole on March 2 at 4:00 PM for the purpose to interview the applicants for the City Council vacancy position. Council will hold a single-subject special meeting March 2 at 6:00 PM to consider appointment to fill the council vacancy. Council's next regular meeting is March 2 at 6:30 PM. On our agenda tonight, we do have a certificate of recognition for Question Mark and the Mysterians.
And tonight, we will have that proclamation read by Councilwoman Ford.
Thank you. It's my great honor to give this tonight. City of Saginaw Certificate of Recognition. Do you think that all the members of Question Mark and the Mysterians might come up to the podium? Certificate of Recognition presented to Question Mark and the Mysterians. Whereas a local American garage rock band of teenage boys from Saginaw and Bay City formed in the early 1960s, inspired by the Japanese science fiction film The Mysterians, the boys decided to call them Question Mark and the Mysterians. The band was recognized for their music style, which set a pattern for other music groups to follow. And whereas in 1966, the band released its first and most acclaimed single, 96 Tears, which was written by Rudy Martinez, aka Question Mark, 96 Tears was a number-one on the Billboard Hot 100 in October of 1966. In November, the single was certified as gold by the Recording Industry Association of America. 96 Tears was listed at number 210 on the 2004 Rolling Stone magazine's feature of 500 Greatest Songs of All Time. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Floyd Clark, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, hereby urge all citizens of Saginaw to recognize, honor, and celebrate the outstanding accomplishments of Question Mark and the Mysterians. In witness whereof, I have hereunto signed my hand and caused the seal of the City of Saginaw to be affixed this 17th day of February in the year of our Lord, 2020. Floyd Clark, Mayor, Councilpersons Brenda F. Moore, Mayor Protem, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Jamie Forbes, John Millen, Bill Ostash, and Autumn L. Searser, along with Timothy Morales, City Manager. Thank you so much for coming, if you'll come.
Oh, wait a minute. You've got something, a little bit volume? No. Is there volume?
Ball, want to come up and let us shake your hand quick? And then you'll say a few words, if that's okay?
That's all right.
Come this way.
Hey, don't be scared. Don't be scared. We don't bite. Don't be scared.
Congratulations, man.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, precious. Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Michael Balls.
Michael.
Yes, sir.
John Millen?
I do.
I don't.
Fairly quick.
Autumn. Larry. Congratulations.
Thank you for coming.
Hey, precious, I'm Brent. My child, I was gonna sing 96 Tears with the little kids, and they were gonna sing. He was gonna sing 96 Tears to us. Thank you so much.
Annie Bench. And not on me, actually. Don't. Thank you for being here. Thank you so much for helping. Thank you so much. Amy Lux.
I don't.
New teens.
Everybody out there is gonna know me. We're a star group. We're still together. Everybody together, right? Come to you, and we're still entertaining.
All right.
We're gonna be playing in Flint with another group that's coming back together, Grand Funk Railroad. These are happy. And I'm trying to sing. No matter what happens in your life, just rock and roll, baby. Because we go round and round, like the groove's up to 45. We keep on going, not in a straight line, but round and round. And when it's time for you to go to the other side, somebody's gonna pick up that handle, and you're on the way to the other side. You know I'm an entertainer. I had to entertain, baby. Because you're gonna hear about us, and you're gonna see us.
Hello. My name's Larry Roldarte, and I'm with Mi Hente Magazine, and I'm good friends with Question Mark and the Band. And I was asked to speak tonight in regard to this band who have really made some magical moments in U.S. rock and roll history. And you know what? They were all from this area, the Great Lakes Bay Region, Bay City, and Saginaw. And of course, led by Question Mark and Bobby Baldurama, Rudy Martinez, Eddie Serrato, who's here represented by his son, Eddie Junior, as well as little Frank Rodriguez, and of course, Frank Lugo. And these guys really made a difference in the musical scene and accomplished something that was unheard of in the day. And not just with Hispanic groups or African-American groups, but a group of young men from Saginaw that came out of nowhere, and they were the quintessential story of young men who had talent, who had the drive, who had the love of their community, and which supported immensely through radio and that beautiful gem of a song, 96 Tears. So on behalf of the entire community of Saginaw, I know I can speak for most of us. We are very proud of you. We love what you did, and we say, keep rocking on. Thank you.
Madam Clark?
Mayor, that takes us to the public hearings.
The purpose, the public hearing for a single lot special assessment. The purpose of the public hearing is for property owners that received a single lot special assessment notice to state their objectives. Speakers must limit their remarks to the subject only. Let me do this. They may have to leave, and I don't want to stop and start, so we're gonna let them leave. Thank you so much for coming.
All right. I'm gonna be entertaining. Remember, we're gonna entertain, baby. Well, yeah, on our Facebook, we got a Facebook that mine is Q U E. M R K, I've answered it's Question Mark and the Mysterians back. And I do respond to everybody. If you don't answer my phone call, I keep your word going. That's my brother. I'm just kidding. That's my brother.
My grandmother. I love it.
Somebody oughta crank that, crank it up.
Are you ready, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Our first public hearing is regarding the 2020 Single Lot Special Assessment Tax Rule.
Speakers must limit their remarks to only the subject at hand. Begin by stating your name and the property address. You are limited to three minutes. Speakers should only speak to council as a whole. Objective is to assume to the property department, I'm sorry, all objectives, and all of the questions will be referred to the department, to the department, and reviewed for recommendations. Any support documents must be handed to the city clerk, not to us. To the city clerk. Thank you. All right, we're ready.
Ready? Want to call for comments?
I'm calling for anybody that wants to speak on the public hearing for the single lot specialty assessment. Is there anyone that would like to come up to the podium and speak? Just step to the podium, state your name and the property's address, please.
Okay, my name's Matthew Weidman. Thanks for the opportunity to come before a hearing. Sometimes you don't get that opportunity, so I'm appreciative of that. I have a note in front of me that was mailed to my office, and we have no problem taking care of our properties or, you know, keeping them nice in the city and all that, you know, because we respect the city and we want, you know, it to be nice for everybody. But I'm having trouble here because it says, "City records indicate an SLSA is levied against the property at", and there's no property address. This company that it's addressed to, DL Properties of Michigan, they have 13 different properties, so I don't know which property it's for. It says for a 2019 wrecker service, so I do know that it was in 2019, but it doesn't give me a specific date or month also when it occurred. So I'm having trouble tracking that back to what was done where and when. And so it's impossible for me to really, you know, in my opinion, pay this $75 fine or have it added to the property, whatever property it was for. And I took a picture of this document so I could give it to the clerk.
If you hand it to the clerk, we're not, we're not gonna respond. What we're gonna do is you're gonna be taken out of advisory by the necessary department, so if you could just hand it to our clerk?
Yep, and like I said, just to reiterate, if it had an address on it and a date when the infraction occurred, we'd be happy to take care of it. And I don't remember getting anything in the mail prior to this notice, and so that's why I showed up here tonight. And when I took a closer look at it, I said, there's no way that I could do what you're asking me to do because of the missing information on the sheet. Because we would normally pass that along to our tenant partner as an infraction of a wrecker service, you know, because they obviously had a car that shouldn't have been parked at the property. So I also wanted, just one more quick thing. I did notice an uptick in the code enforcement at the city, and I just want to say that's been a longstanding, you know, thing that needed to be improved, and that now that it is being addressed and improved upon, that's a great step in the right direction, you know, because they do that really good job of that in the township, and it really keeps everything nice and holds everybody to a nice, you know, level playing field as far as what you expect on the property. So thank you for that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the assessment?
Call one final time? Your third final time?
Third and final time. Do we have anyone else who wants to speak on behalf of the public hearing? Hearing none? I need a motion to close.
Some more. Support.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Thank you. Madam Clark?
Yep, we do have another public hearing tonight, and it's regarding the 2020 to 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program, the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, and the Home Investment Partnership Program.
We are now at another public hearing. Speakers are to stick strongly, I'm sorry, people are to stick to the topic at hand. When you come up to the podium, I need you to state your name and your address on this one as well. And you just stick to us, and all of this will be referred back to the necessary department. Do we have anyone who would like to speak to address this public hearing on?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick. Councilman.
Former councilman. But I do really appreciate the opportunity to speak. I want to thank Brenda, Mayor Protem, and the rest of the council, Mr. Manager, and City Clerk, and the many staff members that helped us. I am representing the Human Planning Commission tonight in the place of Rick Longoria, who is out with a knee surgery, having a knee replacement. So that's why Rick couldn't be here tonight. Recently, we, in the last several months, as you know, the Human Planning Commission has been meeting with area groups and departments within the city to deliberate on the matter of block grants. The primary purpose in this volunteer commission being made up of individuals from city districts and appointed by council to work with city staff on vetting and advising for those yearly HUD funds in the form of block grants. These funds are meant to give financial help for local citizen groups to enhance the good of neighborhoods, homeownership pride, help for the handicapped, aid to the elderly and the young, healthy teen activities, and to address local issues regarding homelessness, poverty, and public safety. And I do believe that there are some of our commissioners here with us tonight. When we had to follow Question Mark and the Mysterians, I thought, oh, boy, that's good, you know? But I used to see that group in my younger days. Anyway, if I say your name and you're here, please stand up or raise your hand so that you can be recognized by the City Council and the folks that are here. Commissioner Darlene Carpenter, Commissioner Roland Carter, Bonnie Arndt, Chris Travers, Sue Simakowska, Jim Wagner, Larry Jones, Sr., Debbie Melkonian. There are a few of us, and thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. I want to thank these folks. They've done a stellar job, as always. The Human Planning Commission is made up of a group of very dedicated folks. So it's my privilege tonight, in place of Mr. Rick Longoria, to talk about, in brief, how much time do I have, anyway?
You have 12 minutes right there.
12 minutes? Okay. We're good then. All right. To talk about the funds and the recipients that we're recommending. And we have met with the city manager, and he has approved our recommendations. Of course, after tonight and during the meeting, this will be in council's hands, and it'll be up to you to make the final decision and to say yea or nay. So... Most of you are aware that we hold these meetings, November through January, in which the members of the HPC consider numerous applicants and presentations which are required by any of the groups requesting the CDB funds. The funds, of course, are limited. The federal government stipulates the amount and the way in which they can be distributed. So the HPC, with considerable help from city staff, and I'd like you all to raise your hand too. City staff that has... Okay, Matisha's there. And where is she? Okay, she stepped out. All right. You folks are very well aware of the good help that we have from the city staff here. So we looked at a lot of different worthwhile groups and requests, and then made determination on the distribution of the funds. The following are our recommendations, which we hope council approves this evening. And I'm gonna just talk in round figures and try and hit a few highlights so that I don't put anybody to sleep. The total estimated funds for 2020 through 2021 I'll be talking now in round figures, and you have the exact amounts and particulars in your council packet, I hope. So we have roughly $2.38 million, but we had $3.7 million in requests. So you see the challenge that was before us. And these include over $324,000 in new requests. Priority in our deliberations were public safety, community policing, viable neighborhood improvements, assisting our youth and elderly in various ways, and providing for those who serve the very poor and the homeless. We have also continued to recognize the importance of funding critical infrastructure needs, read roads and walkways, et cetera, in our city. Our attention is given in particular to those organizations which leverage the HUD dollars to secure their own matching funds. This illustrates the big difference between just a handout and a very real hand up. That being said, we have to limit, reduce, and unfortunately, say no to some requests. There's only so much pie to go around, as your mom used to tell you. In an effort to keep this concise and not lose you in the details, we'll start with the first category, which is housing rehab, where we had $882,000 in requests and only $391,000 available to us for this category. As a result, we proposed funding services and groups in terms of spec writing, residential loans, and the CAC Elderly and Disabled Program with that amount that I just mentioned. In the Public Facilities category, there was $162,000 for street repair, which is a pittance for what we have here in the city, which is 296 miles of road. It also includes $149,000 to the work and effort of several community organizations in needy areas for projects which provide shelter and healthy activities for disadvantaged young folks. Again, you can see those particulars in your copies. The Economic Development category funds are recommended in the amounts of $326,000 for the continuing project of vacant and dangerous buildings and blight elimination. $481,000 for the SEDC business startup and improvement loans and the required loan repayments. These are longstanding funded projects and result in additional jobs and businesses in the city as well as widespread blight elimination, which City Council, city staff have been working on for many, many years now. We have also allocated $38,000 for the DDA, the Downtown Authority, to continue marketing downtown business and educational facilities. Public Services is another category which includes a wide range of services and a big number of nonprofit organizations. And our recommended amount is $214,000. Also in this category is city policing, which is a presence that police, the police, provide to geographic neighborhoods or quadrants, and that recommended amount is $142,900. There's a number of recipients, and too many to list, but the recommendations include some new recipients, namely Eastside Soup Kitchen, one of the projects for Habitat for Humanity, and the YMCA. It's a $345,000 total, which is the max cap of 15%, which we are required to keep under for this category. Emergency Solutions Grants is aimed primarily with alleviation of the homeless problem in our city. For these, we have five named agencies which confront these many issues related to homelessness, and we recommend $181,800. Another category called Home Funds is funded at $397,000. These recipients are Habitat for Humanity and the City of Saginaw Continued Residential Rehab Efforts. So with that, we would like to thank the city manager, the Director of Management and Budget, and the block grant staff for their help and support. And we now hand it over to the hands of City Council to deliberate and consider, and we thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak?
Good evening. Mayor Protem, City Councilmembers, City Manager. My name is Mary Ellen Johnson. My address is 1226 North Michigan. I'm here to thank you for your support that you've provided for our shelter programs. Because of you, young kids who have run away from home, 12 to 17, can get off the street 24 hours a day. Kids walk to our shelter. Oftentimes, if families been in crisis, they come with no shoes, no coats. They're scared, they're hungry. And because of you, we have a place for them to come in, get safe, get dry clothes, and then work with the family to resolve the crisis. We also have youth who are 17 to 21, where home is not a safe place for them to return. And with your block grant funding, we're able to provide long-term housing for them. And as you would expect, that includes job training, employment, life skills. These kids are right on the edge of being successful, and your block grant dollars are needed for us to keep our shelters open. We have a young baby in our shelter right now. We have a young baby in our shelter right now. He is two months old and has some very serious, very challenging breathing problems. That baby and the mom have staff 24 hours a day to help him, and I can tell you, a couple months ago, when he first came home, there was a respiratory distress issue with him. If she's 18 years old, if she did not have the support of staff, it would be real difficult for that baby and that mom to take care of his needs. This is going to be an ongoing issue for him. It's not something that's going to correct itself easily. And again, the staff there 24/7 make a huge difference to support that child and support the mom. And again, your block grant dollars make all the difference for us. Block grant also is matching funds for HUD money, and because of you, we bring in over $100,000 of HUD money, again, to keep the shelters open. So we want you to know that we're so grateful for your support. We need your support. The kids are safe, they're doing well, and they're right on the edge of being very successful young adults. So thank you so much, we appreciate you.
We have three minutes?
Yes.
Good evening, city council, city manager, and the staff, citizens here and citizens at home on TV. My name is Bill Scheiburger, and I live at 1137 Howard Street. And one of the little hats I wear is I'm the chairman of the Transit Advisory Committee for the Stars Bus System. And so here's our little audio visual to the audience. And what I'm here to speak for-
Mr. Bill, excuse me.
Pardon me, go ahead.
You are getting ready to go into public comment, and we're still at, or is he right?
No, this is public hearing on the grant program.
On the grant program. It's just on the grant.
Only.
Okay.
And I'm very familiar with the grant program in Saginaw. I don't question any of the integrity of the staff who works hard year-round on this. And I was once served for three years as the vice chair of the Human Plan Commission. We never had a request like this from the Stars Bus Authority. And what their request was, was to have bus pads. And I'm going to keep on this, I'm in it to win it. And a bus pad is sidewalk that is connected between the curb and the regular sidewalk. And starting out with, I have these council communications, how they had 26 agreements in the last year for various groups, and I do not have to knock these organizations to make the Stars Bus requests look good. However, I do know, in working on public transportation as an advisory committee, that there is a lot of, I knew this as a kid in Detroit, there is a lot of prejudice, bigotry, however you want to say it, against public transportation, that it's a waste of money. What's wrong with those people? They should have a car, et cetera. And so I still have time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So I know that when I was on the Human Plan Commission, you can tweak requests that are made. The council made adjustments, and the city manager at that time. And so I am asking the same thing. For a tradition here in Saginaw that started in 1863 with horse-drawn trolley cars, and they were racially integrated, by the way, and up until this day. And this, I believe, will pick up ridership, and just for example, the Route 54 that goes from downtown out to Saginaw High via East Genesee is probably the heaviest road route in the city, fixed route. And I counted 34 bus stops that do not have sidewalk at the bus stop for people to board safely and deboard the bus. So I think that with these requests that were made last year, that if the city council would grant money to Stars to build these bus pads through the city engineer's office, that you'll have something to show in 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm Audra Davis. I'm the president and CEO for the United Way of Saginaw County. That's 100 South Jefferson, Saginaw, 48607. And I just wanted to thank the city mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city council, and city manager, along with the Human Planning Commission for consideration and support of homelessness in the city of Saginaw, and their dedication and hard work in developing their recommendations for the city emergency solution grant allocation. The recommended allocations for both United Way of Saginaw County projects will assist us in achieving our goal of solving financial instability in Saginaw County. With the recommended allocation for the Homeless Management Information System project, the United Way of Saginaw County can ensure that approximately $2.3 million of Department of Housing and Urban Development and Michigan State Housing Development Authority funding in combination to funding from additional federal and state departments for homeless assistance continues to be awarded to continuum of cares partnering agencies. It allows us to be able to track nearly real-time homeless outcome data and gives us the ability to make better data-driven decisions than we would be able to do so otherwise. With the recommended allocation for the homeless prevention and rapid rehousing project, the United Way of Saginaw County, in collaboration with Saginaw County Youth Protection Council, can continue to prevent homelessness from occurring by providing rent and utility assistance to those facing eviction and by providing security deposit rent and utility assistance. This program is vital to the continuum of care achieving four key Department of Housing and Urban Development outcomes: reduction in the number of homeless households, reduction in the number of first-time homeless households, reduction in the length of time homeless, and increased permanent housing exits from homeless situations. The recommended allocations for all projects seeking funding under the emergency solution grant will continue to assist the continuum of care and its partnering agencies in their goal to end homelessness in Saginaw County. Again, we truly thank you for helping us make a difference and also for living united.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? One last time, do we have anyone else to speak? I need a motion.
Motion to close the public hearing on CBDG emergency solution grants.
Support has been moved and support in discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes have it. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. We are now at public input.
Welcome to all of those who have signed up to address council tonight. Hearing for my citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slow and clearly so that we don't miss what you have to say. When speaking, when called to the podium, let us know if you're speaking solely for an individual or if you're speaking for a group. All speakers have three minutes. We ask that the, we ask that your presentation be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching on W, I'm sorry, on SGTV, and to the council, so that we give serious considerations for your concerns. All followers will be referred to the city staff. Thank you. Our first person?
Our first speaker tonight is Eric Carbin.
Members of the council, last year on May 6th and May 20th, I expressed to city council my safety concerns about the traffic signal at the intersection of Grashit, Michigan and Mackinaw. Since then, the city has done some work at this intersection, including installing new signs. About this, I will have more to say at a later date, but tonight I wish only to address some comments made by the city manager at two city council meetings last year. On May 6th, the manager said, "We are following all the traffic rules at that intersection." Then on May 20th, the manager said, "We understand that sometimes there can be issues, even if everything is functioning properly and according to law." I would like to see documents that explain and support the above statements of the manager. I would also like to know who we are who supposedly understand there can be issues. If the manager's statement was meant to convey the impression that everything is functioning properly and according to law, I would like to know if his statement was based on a written opinion of a lawyer, a written report of an engineer, or other documentary evidence? Or was his statement just based on talk? At the council meeting on May 20th last year, the manager said he had talked to Phil Carwatt, the director of the Public Services Department, who apparently told the manager, quote, "They have worked on this issue in the past in reviewing it. They did look at it again. They reviewed the signals. Staff reviewed the operation of the traffic signal at the intersection of Grashit, Mackinaw, and Michigan," close quote. The manager's restatement of what Phil Carwatt told him does not make it clear to me who "they" are. The manager suggested "they" includes the city engineer and the deputy director of public services, but are these two different people or two different job titles held by one and the same person? It remains unclear to me who "they" are who reviewed the signal. I would like to see documents relating to the review of the traffic signal that occurred after they did look at it again. I would like to see from those documents what the review process consisted of, what exactly was reviewed, who and which staff conducted the review, how he, she, or they were qualified to conduct the review, as well as on what date and at what location the review was done. In conclusion, I have already made a FOIA request to inspect the records that relate to the traffic signal at Michigan, Mackinaw, and Grashit. The records that were shown to me by the engineering department pursuant to my FOIA request did not include any of the documents which I have just now indicated I would like to see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mary McCulloch. Do not see her? Mark Schwager. If you'd like to submit it, yes, I'll take it.
You told me bring copies in.
Oh, thank you. Oh, okay.
Is this broadcast on TV?
Yes, it is.
All right.
Yes, it is. On television, smile.
I hope so. I'm going to smile. I hope you guys will smile for me, too. Did, does everybody get a copy? They haven't got a copy? You haven't started me yet, have you?
Yes.
Okay, hey, people, I'm here to protest about the loud boom-boom boxes coming out of your cars between 12 and 3 o'clock in the morning. You have to stop. The address is on that thing there. Okay, I'm here to protest about charging me $125 for non-occupational living. I have somebody living in that house right now. What am I supposed to do? Pay $125? Last year was 75, now it's 125. What am I supposed to do, guys? Come on, give me an answer.
We can't answer you. We're going to refer it to the necessary office, and I guarantee you, you will have an answer.
Okay, can you also tweet, maybe tweet the law to, if somebody's living in the residence, get the non-occupational person who's living there, I'm not living there, at least a chance to, you know, not have to pay a fine? Because like I say, my granddaughter, my daughter-in-law, my grandbaby, and my son is living in the house. And I'm not going to put them out on the streets, but I can't afford to pay $125 each and every year this comes up. Last year, I had to fight with you guys for court date, and I had to end up paying for a lawyer and plus paying for getting that taken care of. Now, it went up to $125. Just tweet the law saying, okay, hey, if you're not living there, but somebody else is living there, you're complying with the law. The house is not vacant, vacated. You see what I'm saying? Does everybody here understand what I'm trying to say?
Once again, we're going to refer it to the necessary department.
Okay.
And you will have an answer.
But am I going to have to pay this $125 before?
We will refer it, and that can be into discussion, please. We got our copies. Everybody has what they need.
Do I have to contact the city clerk here to find out if it's been taken care of or something? Because I'm taking off.
You should, you should get a written notification.
Okay.
Because we'll also get the same notification that you received, we'll get it as well, us council members.
Good enough. For the loud boom-boom boxes, you listen up clearly. I'm requesting that the city put a police officer in that address that's up there. This guy is very loud. Whoever's playing this music is very loud, from 12 o'clock to 3 o'clock in the morning. I'm up at that time. My dogs are going nuts. I know you're ruining my grandbaby's hearing. I've been here before on this loud music stuff since 1995. I started coming in front of this council. Ma'am, please help me. I need it really bad. I'm a poor person, but I'm trying to be happy.
We'll get back to you, sir. Thank you.
Y'all, have a good day. I'm going home and take some insulin.
Next, we have Bill Scheiburger.
Welcome again, Mr. Bill.
Yeah, I guess I'm like a bad check. Honorable Mayor Pro Tem Brenda Moore, members, council ladies and councilmen, city staff. I'm here again to speak on the Stars Bus System, different facet. And anytime that I've ever had the privilege of appearing at this public comment, I've never been here to grind an ax or attack somebody personally and things like that. And I try to stay away from you guys because my eyesight is still good and I see women amongst the council. Anyway, there will be a Stars election along with a presidential primary. Got my ballot very efficiently on Saturday. Haven't filled it out yet, but I just wanted to show everybody what it looks like before I mail it. And the village is basically to operate the city buses, as opposed to seeking funds, which they have done a very good job over there on Johnson Street, applying for various grants to help out their operation. And most of the money goes for wages, as you probably can imagine. And what else did I want to say? Oh, we have a fundraising campaign, which you're all invited to come to our spaghetti and meatball dinner down at the Savoy downtown Saginaw, one of the few restaurants left down there. And the price is $8 for an adult, kids under 6 free. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Levante Carrington, and I believe that he withdrew earlier. Our next speaker is Levante Carrington, and I believe that he withdrew earlier. So that leaves us with Tom Mudd.
Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, city clerk, city manager, my name is Tom Mudd. I'm a longtime resident on the east side of Saginaw. I'm here tonight as a member of the Saginaw Valley Air Museum. The president of the museum, as well as three other members, are also here in the audience tonight. Thanks to the Saginaw Valley Air Museum, in 2016, a very special airplane lifted off from the airport near Blaine, Minnesota, as part of a collection of the Golden Wings Air Museum, which was selling out its collection, something we didn't know till later. This aircraft, at 80 miles an hour, flew over Lake Michigan, landed at Harry Brown Airport, and that was the first chance I had to see this very special, very historic aircraft. This aircraft was built in 1929, shortly after Charles Lindbergh crossed the Atlantic. It also was a special plane because it was one of the early cabin airplanes, which meant that you had a cabin to protect you from the weather. It was designed by Walter Carr, who is in the Michigan Aviation Hall of Fame. But even more special than anything, this plane was built right inside the 1927 hangar that still exists at Harry Brown Airport. This is a Saginaw airplane. The Paramount Aviation Company produced only eight of these aircraft before the Great Depression ended its business. This plane is the sole survivor of the Paramount Company. Soon after the plane was, the plane was on display for about three weeks, and then it went back to Blaine, Minnesota. It was then that we found out that the plane was for sale. So what we did is we set out, on three of us, a retired Dow Chemical pilot, the president of the air museum, and myself, and we went on the road in front of businesses and organizations in the tri-county area, and we had wonderful support. But now, we've been given a deadline, and the deadline is July 1st. After July 1st, the plane will go on the general market and most likely be picked up by some other collector. We want this airplane, a Saginaw airplane, to come back to Saginaw. The owner of the Golden Wings Air Museum has stepped down the cost of the air, we're not gonna get into the numbers, but he stepped down the cost of the airplane to the point where we think we can actually raise the money to purchase this aircraft and bring it back to the hangar where it was constructed in 1929. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, that takes us to remarks of council.
Once again, I remind all council persons, you have three minutes for public comment, three minutes. No borrowing time, three minutes. We'll start tonight with Councilwoman Serge.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. First, I want to say thank you to everyone that came in attendance. It's so good to see, not, well, now there's seats, but there wasn't seats available. And thank you to everyone watching at home. Tonight is very special to me because I have my family here. Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, and everyone knows it's not a secret, this is my sorority that I'm a part of. And tonight, we have our youth group that did the pledge and the prayer, and then also in the second row are some of my sororors. So I just want to say, give some knowledge and some history about Zeta Phi Beta, because we have been here for 100 years. We are a community-conscious, action-oriented organization that is committed to the principles of scholarship service, sisterhood, and finer womanhood. And we hold those principles near and dear to our heart. But one of the most amazing things that we do is we have a youth group, we have three youth groups, the Archanets, who are ages 14 to 18, the Amikets, 9 to 13, and our Perlets, which are aged 4 to 8. So we start mentoring women young, and we want them to support and uphold our principles as much as we do. We are probably setting a historic, we're setting history tonight because I believe we are the first historically black Greek-letter organization in Saginaw to be in council chambers tonight. But we are also the first to start youth auxiliary groups. The graduate chapter here in Saginaw started 53 years ago, and we have not slowed down. And in addition, we don't just stop at our youth, we stop, we continue with women who don't necessarily have degrees but still support our principles. So we have a group called Amikai, and we have one of our Amikai here, President, Ms. Dolores Casey McNair. So our youth groups have over 100 international Archanet youth groups, and with our Perlets and Amikets, we have over 150 international groups. I have the honor of serving as president of the graduate chapter here in Saginaw, Michigan, where we've been around since 1967. And again, we have, we are one of the first to start youth groups here in the city of Saginaw. The Saginaw Zetas don't stop. We are, we have national partnerships, we do community service projects, we have great relationships with a lot of the nonprofit organizations here, and we hold a finer womanhood program every April. If you don't know a Zeta, now you do because there's some in the audience, and there's me up here. So I also want to thank the advisors because what you do to uphold and support our youth and for our chapter is endless and tireless, so thank you, not just from the president, but for a city council member who is in the city, lives in the city, and supports it. To our young ladies, we love you, we hope you continue to grow, and you see that you can be in this seat one day as a leader in this city of Saginaw. You are brave and you have great potential, so continue to do what you do. That is all that I have.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Bench.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, thank you to our public speakers for coming before us here tonight. Welcome, and thank you for being here to our young Zetas. It's great to see so many young, future leaders here in our audience tonight. I just want to say that it's really very exciting to be here on an evening where we're recognizing question mark in the Mysterians. I think that's probably one of the coolest things that Saginaw is on the map for. So it was very cool to be here while they were here. I want to take the opportunity, too, to thank our staff and the Human Planning Commission for all their hard work. Every year, we receive less than, and every year, there are more and more requests, and it's just never easy to find that balance between supporting programs that have been here and need matching dollars, and new programs that are trying to get a, you know, get a start, you know, on their own. But we also want to thank all the organizations as well who applied, because without you providing these services to our community, so many people who are vulnerable would go without. And, you know, there's a real human impact that we're able to make here at the council table when we are able to, you know, approve these dollars. So just thank you to everyone and all their hard work that they put into it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Thanks to all of our guests this evening. I'm so thankful to have a group of powerful Zeta ladies here tonight to lead our prayer and pledge. It was also to mimic the previous speakers, it was a joy to honor question mark in Mysterians tonight. They're such an important part of Saginaw history and really rock and roll in general, and it's awesome that they're still entertaining us with great music. So as I mentioned at the last meeting, not to beat a dead horse, but the county commissioners still haven't made up their final, they haven't made their final decision on the location for the animal control center. I believe that the location, that a location in the city is the most fair and fiscally responsible decision, and it would be best for the entire county and for the animals that live here. But either way, I hope that you let your voice be heard. You can email the board of commissioners at boc@saginacounty.com. Although it will probably be after the decision is made, the next city-wide neighborhood association meeting will be focused on the services provided by animal control. That meeting is March 26th at the Center for Hope, which is right near us. I hope that everyone will join us for that meeting. An extra special thank you to the members of the Human Planning Commission, just as Annie said, you all work so hard and make really tough decisions. And there, and I know that there are so many important organizations doing good work here, and it is really tough to narrow those priorities. I am, however, disappointed to see that we still have over half the committee that's not filled. And I, and I know that you all work so hard, but it might be better to have a few more hands at that table, and so I'm wondering if it might be time to maybe get a little more creative about how we fill those seats. I know that a lot of us at this table have tried to get them filled, but they're very specific, you have to live in certain voting precincts, and so, so if anyone is curious about that committee, please, please go online and check out what precincts are available and consider filling out a quick application with the city clerk's office to hold one of those incredibly influential seats. And then, one last thing, by the way, the STARS village campaign spaghetti dinner is on February 26th from 4 to 7 at Savoy.
27.
Oh, I'm sorry, 27. It's right here in front of me, I still set it wrong. The 27th from 4 to 7, thank you. That's all.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Beal. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Welcome, everybody. It's good to see, it was good to see a full chamber tonight. I think they were right out the door. But also, Councilwoman Forbes was just talking about the Human Planning Commission, and I attended all their meetings, and it really is informative to see everybody that is coming in and trying to get money for various programs in the city that are just really greatly needed. And again, not to reiterate everything they're saying, but it's really a great group working hard. And I'm glad that she touched on the fact there's still positions open on that commission. So please, go to the city website, you can find it under the government clerk section and what's open and apply for it. And then also, too, just for another plug, that we do have other boards and commissions. If you want to get involved in Saginaw and you want to get back to your community, because a lot of times you just, people are just talking about it, but this gives you a chance to actually be a part of something and put your voice there. So thank you for all of that. Real quick, I've been getting out now after the holidays and through January, back into the neighborhood association meetings, groups out there that are just doing a lot of really good things in the city. I was able, over the last two weeks, to attend the Cathedral District Northmore Old Town Business Association and also into the Hope and Jones area. Rest assured, others, I'm gonna try and get to you as well, there's quite a few in the city. Sometimes you're all on the same evening, same time, so my goal would be to try to get there once, at least twice during the year. And one of the good things that I saw during your meetings is you guys were talking about the census, which is really important. More and more, we're starting to hear about that. About 40% of the state's funding comes from the census, so it's really good to get counted, and then about $1,800 per person that is counted. So if you just kind of do the math here in the city of Saginaw, it starts to add up. So thank you for putting that word out there through the neighborhood association meetings. Another thing I just want to address, because as a council person, when you're on the other side, you don't always see what we see on this side of the table. And so some of the things I've been hearing, just in the social media platform and through conversation with folks, is the form of government that the city of Saginaw has. So I just kind of want to put this, just a little moment out here, maybe we'll call it Councilman Oster's Moment of Education for City Government 101. But the, there are different forms through the Home Rule Act, which is the state statute for the state of Michigan, which then the cities will then put together and how their cities are going to be run. So a lot of people are always wondering, well, why don't we elect our mayor? Well, we don't have that form of government here in the city through our, through our city charter. So that would be something like the city of Flint, where the mayor is elected, and they conduct the business over the city staff. What Saginaw has is a council manager form of government, where we elect a city council, the city council then appoints a city manager to run the city, and that, the manager then takes care of all those administrative things that are going on with directors and staff, streets, and whatnot. Then the city council, and this is always the part I think, real quick, we elect the mayor. Thank you. I actually knew something like three minutes. I hope I got that all out there.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to, thank everybody for coming to the city council meeting this evening. And I'd like to thank the young ladies for coming and presenting the prayer and the pledge allegiance to the city council today. You guys are gonna remember this maybe 15, 20 years ago, 20 years later, when you are leaders, after you went to college and doing the things you do, you may be city council people, or a mayor, or even a president of the United States. It's possible, and you guys can do it. So remember where you got your feet wetted, right here at Saginaw City Council. And I'd like to thank your leaders, too, for mentoring you guys in this program. You know, Frigga Douglas said that it was easier to mentor kids than to fix grown adults. And you know, and if we do what we do today by mentoring these kids, and the Human Planning Commission is making sure that they get their money into the organizations like Master Seed and Big Brothers and Sisters programs, then if we can make sure in the city of Saginaw, which was just voted one of the most caring cities in the United States, you know, and we exemplifying that here today by having all you people here keep on doing the good work, we really appreciate what you're doing for the city of Saginaw. We can make, we can make this work. So thank you very much, Human Planning Commission, and to the Zetas for mentoring the girls. Everybody that came here with complaints today, I'm sure the city manager will get back to you and let you know what's possible and not possible with the city. I, too, have to pay that unoccupied dwelling. I'm seeing like, if the house is occupied, why is it, you know, somebody's got to pay it, but the landlords got to pay that fee for being landlords in the city of Saginaw. You know, we have a cap, a tax cap, and it's one way to help us pay our bills by getting that extra funds. So I didn't want to tell the gentleman that the, I don't know whether he can get rid of that is pay the fine, but I didn't want to say that, because eventually, he probably will have to. But I'd like everybody to remember that this is Black History Month. Please think about some of the accomplishments and all the work that African-Americans have done in this country to build this place, the United States of America. There's a lot of things that African-Americans have done to make this a better place for everybody, and we should remember that all the time. Thank you very much. Let me share those comments.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I also wanted to start by thanking the Human Planning Commission for its hard work. I want to remind everyone that they are volunteers when they put in those long hours, often in the evening, to complete their work. And I wanted to carry on with something Mr. Fitzpatrick mentioned, that oftentimes, these grants serve as the matching funds that allow larger allocations from HUD. But there's a flip side to that. I want to thank the community, because often, your private donations to these partner groups serve as the matching funds that allow them to get the CDBD grant. So it's a two-way street, and everyone working together is what really makes it work. Between our last city council meeting and tonight, we had the State of the City, State of the County address at the Saginaw Chamber of Commerce breakfast, and I just wanted to let everyone know, correct me if I'm wrong, that is available on video on our website. So if you missed that, and you want to see what the mayor and the chair of the county board of commissioners were saying, check out our Saginaw website and see what you can see. And that's all.
Thank you so much. Mine's short and sweet. First of all, good evening again. I'd like to thank everyone who spoke, my leaders, I'm not claiming future, my leaders. It took a lot for you to come to this meeting tonight, I'm sure, because she wanted to do something else. But I just want to thank you for coming, and this is your first step to being introduced to the world, to the real world of public speaking. So that by itself is a charge, my ladies, my advisories, kudos to you. I think you're doing a great job, as always, and not just because she's up here with me. I think you're doing a great job, period. As for our speakers, it is so hard sometimes, sitting here, listening to our citizens, because you want to just say, hey, we can do this, but we cannot. We've got a lot of stuff that prohibits us from doing a lot of things that we'd like to do. Bill is right. Our system is not ran on mayor base, it's ran on city management. We have one employee, and you see, it's right there. We have one employee, and so when we talk about the things that we'd like to do, city council, we're getting better, we're trying to be visible, and we're trying to be more in the community so that you will know who we are. Last week, the last two weeks I've been in and out of Washington, DC, I had the opportunity of actually being at the hearing of our president, and after I left the hearing, it was so distraught because the same thing that we talked about tonight, they want to cut. They want to cut block rent money. I'm sitting in the meeting, listening to them telling us about the money that they don't have for infrastructure, the money they don't have for this, the money they don't have for that. It's gonna take all of us, y'all. It's gonna take us taking our city back. If we want to make this thing work, it's not just Brenda fighting anymore, it's the people fighting. So we're all gonna have to work on it. I got selected to be on the board on another committee in Washington. I got selected to be on the board on another committee in Washington, I'm so excited, woo-hoo! I'm so excited, because I get to talk about my city. When I'm out and about in the United States, I'm always talking about the city of Saginaw. The city of Saginaw. So, I need you all to understand, when I walk on an airplane, when I'm in the airport, when I'm on a bus, when I'm in a car, s- the city of Saginaw comes first. It comes first. Coming up, they don't know it, but I'm getting ready to announce it. No, I'm not, I'll do it in a minute.
Yeah, five more seconds.
I have five more seconds. Coming up, no, 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 we're not going to assert our power tonight, we're gonna be on April the 6th. City council members, we are hosting an ice cream social regarding the census. Each member, I'm asking you to come up with fifty-six members. Fifty-six members represents, represents money and dollars for our census, it represents a million dollars. I need fifty-six people to come and eat some ice cream with me, and they, we all need it. And what we're gonna do is, we're gonna have computers available, we're gonna be in the building with coffee and donuts one day, and we're just gonna just, we just want the census to count. Keep in mind, we need the money. So, if I can get fifty-six volunteers to bring their letter that you should be receiving on March the 15th, they start coming out, if you can come, I'm having ice cream, and I'm hoping that my fellow council people will join me, we'll have ice cream. And all we ask you to do is come, do the census. Your vote, you count. Keep that in mind, you count. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Clerk.
We are now at the reports from the manager.
Thank you, and, um, first I want to update council on a couple of items.
Can I, can I just excuse, excuse you for one minute? I know that this has been a long meeting, so anybody that needs to leave, we're okay with it, we're okay. God, I'm getting like the man now, I sure know how to clear room, don't I? Thank you all for coming. It's okay, everybody take their time, I don't want nobody following, we don't got no money. We got no money involved, we can't, we can't help you. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sir.
Okay, so, if, if you're not aware, the Public Safety Special Assessment that we have is allowed, uh, because of an amendment to Public Act 33 of 1951, which, uh, allows for townships, villages, and cities under fifteen thousand population to have a special assessment for, uh, police, fire, administration, and services. In 2004, that was amended to allow the city of Saginaw based on population for city and county. And we are aware that with this upcoming census, that it's likely that the county population will not fit into that range that was previously amended. So, some time ago, the mayor, Mayor Protem, I, and a city attorney met with, um, both Representative Guerra and, um, Senator Horn regarding this, um, legislation. Both have introduced a legislation, uh, in the senate and the house. On February 6th, I went to testify for the senate, um, Committee on Local Government, and it went, uh, very well, it passed the committee the next week, and they're hoping to bring it to the senate floor, uh, within the next few weeks, and I believe the house will follow after that. So, if they require how, testimony in the house, I'll go to that as well. So, that's progressing, uh, well, and I think will be done, uh, fairly quickly. The second item, 'cause I know there are some members on council who weren't here when we did this, but we, in the budget adjustment, there's a reference to, um, the Public Ramp One Parking Facility, and we, uh, some of you recall, we began looking at that in, I think, 2017. In April of 2018, we did receive a report on that, um, facility, and it was, long-term repair to that facility was almost sixteen million dollars. A new ramp is eighteen million, so, it didn't really make sense to rehab that ramp. The consultant, uh, was Walker Consultants who specializes in parking in cities, they do a lot of this type of analysis. Their recommendation was a demolition and surface lot, uh, construction on that site. They estimated that cost of a project like that to be about one point six million dollars, from what we're seeing, and that is pretty close to what we're talking about, um, actual costs. To give you an idea, um, and some of the other costs, they had a short-term repair of the, of the ramp that they estimated would last about five years, that was a million dollars. Intermediate-term repair, which would last ten to fifteen years, was about five point three million dollars. The long-term repair I mentioned, uh, fifteen point eight, and the new parking structure, eighteen point two million dollars. The surface lot, as I said, is about one point six million dollars, estimated to last twenty-five to thirty years, with an annualized lifecycle cost of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. The next lowest was three hundred and ten thousand dollars annualized cost, and that was, um, the short-term repair. So, the result that we think is the best one is the surface lot, as, uh, was recommended by Walker at the time. One thing that we are going to look to do, and I've talked to, uh, staff about it, is if you recognize down there the old park sign, um, that's on the side of the building, that was originally a neon sign, and, um, we, uh, want to have that removed and preserved and restored and put back in that parking area, so I think that's a good, um, callback and similar to the, uh, parking lot on the, in the, um, in Old Town, and that would be the first one, and, uh, we are, uh, I don't know if he's left, but we have been working with, uh, Mr. Mudd on that project as well, so, I think he's going to assist us with that. And, going, uh, talking about the parking lot project too, I wanted to announce that, um, the city was awarded two grants for the, um, from Consumers Energy for the, um, charging stations. Uh, one, one for the Hundred South Hamilton Street, which is an Old Town parking lot, and one for 220 South Baum. There are ten thousand dollar grants for dual-port, level-two EV charging stations, and, um, Ms. Jones and her staff put together the application, so, uh, she did a lot of good work on that, so, well, that is a great outcome, and that's one of the items we talked about, the strategic planning session, and the city was also awarded ninety thousand dollars from the Michigan Department of Treasury for a parking study, as well as a housing study for the city, and we want to work that into the, um, master plan process as well, so we do all of these things at the same time. Yolanda will work on that as well. And finally, I just wanted to mention, the February Police Officer of the Month is Officer Jordan Engelhardt, and I think a lot of people know, uh, Officer Engelhardt, so, congratulations to him on, uh, being the February Officer of the Month, and that concludes the management update.
Madam Clerk.
Thank you. We are now at the consent agenda.
This agenda has been available on city, on our city webpage at City Hall, and also on for WSGTV, channel one ninety-one. I need a motion.
I'd like to make the motion and we accept the recommendations.
Do we have any exceptions, I'm sorry?
I do. Did, did you have an exception?
We're gonna wait.
No.
No. We need the exception.
Uh, five, because it goes with fifteen and fifteen as well.
So, we have a motion on the floor to, to approve the agenda with the exception of five and?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Second?
It's been moved in second.
Move for exceptions, yeah.
Discussion.
We have to vote on that.
No, it's moved in second.
Yes, we, is that the only exception?
Yeah, those were the only exceptions, five and, five and fifteen, right?
Now you can vote on the motion.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
First exception is number five, approve the amendments to the fifth year 2020 approved budget to recognize changes that have occurred during the December period.
Councilman Ostache.
Uh, so the reason why I accepted that, Mayor Protem and manager, is because that's where you're asking for us to move the eight hundred thousand from the general budget for the parking ramp and the other costs. So, that, that was why I accepted that out, because that kind of goes to, um, item fifteen, but fifteen is what I want to talk about.
Can you make a motion to approve item five?
Are you okay with it, or you asking a question?
Sure, I think I just got a little confused, but yeah, I'm okay with number five.
Okay, so then I need you to give me a motion.
Yeah, motion to approve Consent Agenda number five.
Support.
It's been moved in second, any other questions? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Our next exception is number fifteen, approve the contract with Doran Associates Contracting for six hundred thirty-eight thousand two hundred dollars for the demolition of Parking Ramp One at 2020 Baum Street, I'm, excuse me, for at 220 Baum Street, from the Engineering Section Right-Away Division, Councilman Ostache.
So, the question concerned that I guess I have with the parking ramp, of course, you, you made, you mentioned that the study was done in April of 2018, so that was prior to my election and being on city council, so, I wasn't part of that conversation, but the ramp itself, at some point, I think back in 2003, we removed two floors, if I'm correct, to make it safe. And what have we really done with that ramp since that point? We have, it's, it hasn't generated any income, there's nobody working there to have anybody park in it, um, and the reason why I bring this up is I was just at a recent meeting for the Dow Event Center, and all of the mil- the millage increase that they're doing down there to take care of their facility, and their parking ramp was part of that, because they said there was a demand for parking in, in the downtown area, and they actually, their goal is to get an arm back on that, where people can swipe a card and, and pay to park in the ramp. So, with the city of Saginaw, I'm just having a hard time with that amount of money for a ramp, and is there a plan? It would be my question if that, if that is demolished, other than a flat surface lot.
Well, I, I mean, I, I don't know what the problem with the demolition is, I guess that's the first step we're doing, we're not, we don't have the construction of a new lot there. The ramp is not safe for use. So, basically, right now, um, it's a downtown building owned by the city of Saginaw, it's not safe for use by the general public, um, that needs to, to come down, frankly. Uh, it's, it doesn't look good for the area, and if people are walking in it, traveling in it, it could cause an injury, so it does, does need to come down. The relative cost of a surface lot is much lower than a ramp, um, and I'll tell you, uh, from discussions that we have with the businesses downtown, they do want parking there. Um, the SVRC desperately wants additional parking in the downtown area, and in fact, have been contacting us frequently to see when that ramp will come down and a lot be built. Um, we also have been contacted, um, very frequently by the new restaurant, uh, downtown that is, um, I'm sorry, I forget the name of it.
Valerie's.
Valerie's, that, uh, is very worried about parking for her customers, because, uh, currently, I believe they are utilizing land that's owned by the Shaheen family that will be developed this year, so, uh, she's concerned about losing parking and is, um, looking forward to a new, uh, parking solutions in that areas, and I think there are other businesses down there too that are asking the same questions.
Yes, sir.
I would simply say that, that in this situation, we're much like any other developer in town, we like to start with a fresh piece of land, so the first step is indeed to take down the old ramp before we can then put forward building anything, anything new on the site. Parking is our first choice at the moment, but everyone likes a clean slate to work with.
Yes, ma'am.
That seems to be the mentality plenty of other times in our history, but, um, I hope that someday we'll have so much going on downtown that we'll need more than one, one layer of, of, of parking, and so it does hurt me to say that this is the best solution that we have at the moment, although I think that maybe it is. But I also want to bring up the fact that, um, to live or to go and utilize the services of a downtown area means that sometimes you have to park and you have to walk a little bit, and so I just want to remind us all that, like, walking a little bit is okay, and then maybe this is what's gonna have to happen for us to have a, an active downtown, and so, um, I hope that we all just have a, like, a little more tolerance for that walk that we're gonna have to make, because to, to, to go eat at Valerie's, they're gonna have to walk a few blocks from that spot, if it is, does become a surface lot, so, this is still not gonna solve the problem of the fact that we want to park immediately in front of the place that we want to go use, and so, um, let's just practice that walking, it's gonna be okay, we'll learn how to do it, um, but that, that, that that's a part of this conversation, no matter what happens with this particular lot, that we're gonna have to just practice that a little bit.
Wow.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, I know we've got some chuckling in the, in the crowd here, but Jamie is, Councilwoman Forbes is making a very good point, and when I am in Old Town Saginaw, I'm not parked in front of the business that I'm eating at, or the business that I'm frequenting, I'm walking two or three blocks, and that's a good thing. Um, when I'm up in Bay City, I'm not parked right in front of where I am either. Urban environments are not built around cars, they're built around foot traffic. And in order for Saginaw to do this with, we have another building that's coming, and then that's why we have the concern with Valerie's and parking, because the Shaheen Development is gonna go up right there on Washington next to her building, but you might have to walk a block to get there. And that, cities are not strip malls in the townships, these are urban environments, and if we can't re, redevelop this urban core correctly, then we're gonna get it wrong and we're gonna have issues. And I would welcome anybody watching TV and here in the audience tonight, go look up Jane Jacobs, and watch that movie, Citizen Jane. She's gonna talk about what happened, and I know it's New York City that they talked about it, but it's the same structural mentality and thought process. Be careful about how much you're gonna knock down in your city, because what she shows is that when you take down these buildings that people were living in and you had a vibrant city, and then they took that and they bulldozed that, and they put up a, a, a housing structure, that all went away. So, even think about your own neighborhood, what happened when they knocked down an entire block, because we had blight and different things we had to address. Just putting I-675 through the city of Saginaw caused problems, broke up neighborhoods. So, people that know me and know that I live in the city and I walk downtown, this is very passionate for me, and I want to make sure that we get it right. And I guess, maybe not so much taking down the parking ramp because we have to, I'm also kind of on the fence of where the funds are coming from, because that kind of money, when I look at six hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and then the other two in the budget for eight hundred, that could be some portion of our leaf service coming back, so that my, my, n- leaves that are down Hoyt Avenue are not frozen, because the people aren't picking them up, and they're plugging our drain systems, or the snowplows are plowing them into my yard, and then they gotta wait there in my other neighbor's yards until spring. These are the services that we have lost in our city because of our tax cap, lost revenue... These are the services that we have lost in our city because of our tax cap, lost revenue through the state. And I might be just kind of going on a ramble now, but these are the things to think about. And then even when you look at that kind of money, we need police, we need fire. We're trying to get a millage right now for our public safety millage. I don't think I'm not making any point that's not in somebody's mind. And I know when I walk through the city and every time we take something else down, trust me, on social media and in the news, it's just gonna be another nail for our city. It's what they talk about. Oh, look at Saginaw, they're knocking it all down again. Why do I, why do I want to be there? Where's the growth? So that's the voice that I'm putting out there for the other people, and I understand we've got a problem here and we need to solve it. But I also want people to hear the other side of the conversation that's out there that never gets spoken. You might hear it on social media, you might occasionally in the news, but that's what I hear.
Yes, ma'am.
I worked at Jake's Cafe and Jacobson's, like, right up until Jacobson's closed, and that parking structure was terrifying, unsafe hazard. We have the opportunity to tear it down and create some usable parking that we do not have currently. It's not being used. This is not a historic mansion. This is a dilapidated parking structure that is serving no good for anybody. I certainly have absolute respect for anybody who questions expenses, you know, of that size and that nature. That's why they come to council for our approval, but I think we're getting off a little off task, I guess, here, and I'd like to move it back to whether this is a worthy purchase for the city to make or a worthy expense for the city to make. I think it is a worthy expense. It's certainly more money than we want to spend, but leaving it, we're gonna probably pay someone when they sue us for some damage that is incurred, and who knows how much that'll cost. Maybe, maybe not, I don't know, but I just, you know, I think we need to take care of it. We expect, you know, private citizens to take care of their property. We expect our commercial properties to be cared for, you know, especially future developing areas. We need to lead by example and use the funds that we have available to, you know, do what we hold our, you know, hold ourselves to the same standard that our citizens hold ourselves to. So I would like to move number fifteen, I hope.
Can I, Mayor, can I answer a couple of the questions? So, um, you know, one of the bonus points of a surface lot, and this is, um, I've seen in Ann Arbor as well, is it can be available for future development as well. So you have the surface lot, depending on how you design it, you could use portions of that for future development. You could use the whole lot for future development, and that's a way to provide the service that we need downtown right now, but you're not limiting yourself in the future. We've worked with the Center for Automotive Research as well, and they are saying, they're predicting we'll need less parking in the future because of connected automated vehicles as well. So that, those are the kind of the things that we take into consideration. When we look at the funds, um, it is a significant purchase, but as some council members have pointed out, we have a responsibility with this building, because it is technically, I guess, a dangerous building that we need to take care of as the owner of it. But also, um, these funds are reserved for capital improvement anyway, and this is a one-time expense. So when you start looking at other services like police or fire or something like that, those are ongoing expenses. This is one of the reasons why these funds are reserved, is to, is to provide a capital improvement for city property. So that, that's the purpose of these funds. And it, the demo itself won't create an ongoing expense. The surface lot will have some ongoing expense, because, you know, you have plowing and repairs, but that is the lowest cost of any of the parking solutions that we looked at for this area.
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Protem, we do have a motion on the floor, so there should be a second to continue discussion.
We did get a second, didn't we?
No, we haven't.
I did not hear a second? I just heard her motion.
Who made the motion?
I made the motion.
But it doesn't have to go back to Bill, because Bill...
Does not have to.
I want to make a comment now.
We need a second first.
You don't need a second.
It's a motion on the floor. I need a second. Then, excuse me. It's a motion on the floor. I need a second. Then we can go back to discussion. It's been seconded by Councilwoman Scherzer.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Ross.
Yeah, I just, um, I mean, sometime we gotta spend money to make money. And if that thing's sitting there and it's not making no money, you gotta spend some money to tear it down and get it taken care of. I would be remiss if, if somebody from, uh, from Detroit at Flint came down here, or I know Brenda, when she goes out of town and myself, and we go, we, sometime we fly somewhere, get a car, go park in the parking ramp, and still gotta walk almost through downtown to get to where you want to go. So we, we got some small-town problems. You know, if somebody gotta walk two or three blocks to a restaurant, they should have a good appetite by the time they get there. So, uh, I'd like to call for the question, if that's in order.
We got a motion on the floor. The motion has been moved seconded. Councilman Ostache, you had concerns.
Yes.
Let me, I just want to know if your concerns are better? Have you, okay, you didn't make the motion.
Right.
Okay, so.
I do want to address one thing, because the manager did say that these funds have been appropriated for this, and I did not know that, because that was not in the memo. Okay, so that does help. Am I happy? No, but it does help.
Moving on. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Ayes, ahs.
We need a roll call when there's a neighbor...
Yep.
We need a roll call?
Yes.
We need a roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please.
Councilmember Mellon?
Aye.
Councilmember Balls?
Aye.
Councilmember Ostache?
No.
Councilmember Forbes?
Yes.
Councilmember Bench?
Aye.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Moore?
Yes.
We have six yes, one nay. Motion is approved.
Madam Clerk.
That takes us to Boards Commission Committee reports.
Do we have any councilperson who needs to speak on boards or commissions? Yes.
I just wanted to let everyone know that the first of our quarterly meetings for the city school county board committee will be this Thursday, February 20th, at the County Board of Commissioners. This would be a good opportunity for any council member who would like to see what the committee is about to attend. We have invited a former council member and also former state representative Carl Williams to come and give a history of the committee and talk about its purpose. I know that the mayor is out of town and he is one of the committee members and he cannot attend. I don't know if Mayor Protem can make it, but this would, again, be a great opportunity for anyone new who would like to come and just see if maybe this is a committee you'd like to serve on, because I know we will be rotating, I think, at some point near the near future. So, um, again, it's 5:30 this Thursday. Thank you.
I advise you to get there before 5:30, because the doors are locked, so you need to get there early.
Thank you.
Anyone else with any boards or commission report? Hearing none. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. We have resolutions. The first one tonight is to approve the home program submission program for 2020, 2021.
Need a motion?
No.
It's been moved and supported. Councilwoman Scherzer had some concerns. You said you thought we needed a roll call vote because of...
Number three. The third resolution, so not this one?
Resolution three?
Correct. We have to do these individually.
Okay, so, let's go back. I'm sorry. So the resolution for one, it has been moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Our second resolution is to approve the homeless assistant program emergency solutions grant submission program for 2020, 2021.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Resident, I'm sorry.
Our next resolution is approve the community development block grant program submission program, program year for 2020, 2021.
I need a motion.
So moved.
I'll support.
Discussion.
We'd like a roll call vote.
Okay, you entitled to it. Okay, she wants a roll call vote. Any discussion? Yes.
So, just a real quick question on the, the allocate, the money that's being allocated for the city that also, like, earmarked for those different areas for the housing and blight elimination that was in the block grant program too, is that specifically then targeted for those parts of the block grant?
The category budgets you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, everything we broke out.
Yeah, that was just, as I had went through the spreadsheet of the breakdown of everything that was approved by the planning commission and then by you and your staff, like streets and resurfacing, that, that money is specifically for those sections, under the public facilities?
Yes, yeah, each category budget is set, and then they allocate the funds within that cap on the applications.
So there's basically just certain amounts for different areas, and then that's all split out and, yes, okay. Thank you. That helps.
Okay, any more questions?
Yep, quick comment, and manager, the reason why I ask that is because when we are at the meetings and listening to all the presentations, there is no public input, so basically the council is just sitting, listening, and then bring my question now. So, thank you.
The purpose for us coming to buy grant really is so that you understand where our dollars are going. And I do appreciate council this year, because we showed up in four fours, not by two rooms, so don't worry about it. It wasn't five of us, but we showed up every night. You had representation from council. So you're really going, when we go, we're not going to make comments. We're just going to hear, so that we understand what they're doing, what the agencies are doing. All of us don't have a chance to get out and get about, so going to these meetings help us see what we got in Saginaw, the jewels we have in Saginaw. Okay, so we got a motion on the floor. Roll call, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Balls?
Yes.
Councilmember Ostache?
Yes.
Councilmember Forbes?
Epstein.
Councilmember Bench?
Yes.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Epstein.
Councilmember Mellon?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Moore?
Aye.
Five yes and two... Motion is approved.
Our fourth resolution tonight is to approve the cost agreement with the Michigan Department of Transportation for the reconstruction of Niagara Street from CMRC railroad tracks to Genesee Avenue for the Engineering Section Right-of-Way Division.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you.
Mayor, you're now at miscellaneous business.
Yes, ma'am.
So, um, so considering all of the conversations that we've had the last few months amongst ourselves and, um, the elected officials at the county level and staff, I'm wondering, um, we are so close to them making a decision. I'm wondering, um, if we might be able to make it official that, uh, that we would like to advocate for, for Manager Morales to, to speak on our behalf in negotiating, um, a potential location within the city for the animal shelter to be located. Um, so I'd like to make a motion that we direct the city manager to continue to work with the county comptroller regarding potential site locations for the animal control project.
Aye, second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All of those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I need a motion to adjourn. I'm sorry.
Is there any other business?
Is there any other business?
Yes. Um, I would also like to make a motion asking the manager to prepare for council a report on the possible local impact of using the state highway bonding and how that might affect our Act 51 funding for our local road vehicles and repair.
I have no idea.
It's a motion, huh?
Go ahead.
It's a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Could you tell us more about that?
Yes, um, the state has chosen to use bond funding to work on state highways. And what I am interested that a report from the manager might elicit is whether that bond debt service becomes the highest obligation out of the state highway trust fund. If there were to be a shortage in funding, would it affect funding that is supposed to flow to localities for both our maintenance of state highways, but a portion of that comes to local highways also? So if bond funding becomes a, the highest priority of that fund, should there be a shortfall in funds, how might it affect us?
Well, I think, I think just generally speaking, I don't know that we can determine that at this point. But when, when you do have a bond, you know, in our case, and I imagine bond payment is your first obligation. So whatever that payment would be, it would probably be the state's first obligation with those funds. So I guess potentially it could, but I don't know if we can gauge that at this time, but I get, but there is, there is a potential there if the, overall, the funding went down. It's not something we've looked at or really thought about at this time.
If it fails to draw a second, I guess the manager is aware of the issue.
I don't think that it failed. I think a lot of us are baffled.
We're baffled, because we don't want to know, because we, we can't do nothing about it in no way. I mean, what the...
No, you know, that, you know, the hardest thing is being up here, and you want to know. Then you only can do so much, and we know that we don't want to tie our city manager's hand, because then he has to talk to Ms. Amy, and then it just goes on and on and on. And so, John, I'm sure that if you get with the city manager, you and him can go into a discussion. I suggest that. Then you go into a discussion, source some clarity on what he expects and what he wants, and then that way, all of us, he can come back and share it, like you always do, with all of us. How does that sound, John?
Oh, that's no problem to me.
Motion to adjourn?
People in a hurry. I'm not on no time clock. Motion. Got a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any comment, any, any comments? Hearing no comments, no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.